Morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting this morning. This time, I'd like to call one Mr. Town and pour a prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Glorious Lord God, the great architect of the universe, the giver of all good gifts and graces. We come asking for your blessings and guidance as we're gathered together today to conduct the business of this county. Lord, we pray for the sick, the distressed, and the grieving in our communities. And we ask you to protect, your protection over our public safety personnel, our military, who protect us on a daily basis. And Lord, we pray for our nation. This country was built on your foundations, and let us remember that we have nothing without you. And holy father, only you know what lies ahead. None of us are promised tomorrow, but may we all live our lives in a manner that is pleasing in your sight. We humbly ask you to forgive us of our sins and bless us in all we do. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Well, now call this meeting in order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the agenda in front of you. I think we've need to delete item four and five under H, I believe it is. Yep, four and five under H, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Motion been made in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You have the minutes from our January thirteenth meeting. Entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion been made, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Okay. Got a resolution I want to present. And I'm gonna come forward here and ask Mr. Gurley if he'd like to stand off. He can stay right there. How you doing this morning, Mr. Gurley? Good to see you.
Pretty good.
Yeah, good to you. Come on over here, let's get the sun on.
Can you back up just a little bit more, Jim?
Back up, okay. Let me hold this while I'm reading, then I'm gonna give it to you. Little girl, she taught me fighting in high school, but I didn't fight in the same time. Whereas, Paul Gurley, a lifelong resident of Chase City, Virginia, graduated from Chase City High School and Longwood College, and served with distinction in the US Army and US Army Reserves during the Vietnam era. Whereas, Mr. Gurley is a dedicated member of Sidney County Methodist Church, where he serves as chair of the church council, reflecting his deep commitment to his faith and community. Whereas, Mr. Gurley married Sylvia in nineteen sixty-three and raised a son. Whereas, Mr. Gurley served Mecklenburg County Public Schools for thirty-four years as he drove education struggle, established the first level program for AAA thereby ensuring the safety and success of campus students. Whereas, Mr. Gurley contributed significantly to the local to the local and Commonwealth governments, serving over Chase City Town Council for eight years, chair of the town's industrial development board, co-chair of the Southside Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program, and over Virginia Commercial Drivers Training School Board under five thirds of dollars. And whereas, Mr. Gurley dedicated forty-five years to the county's Highway Safety Commission, implementing policies that improve local road safety, served as chair of the county's Community Criminal Justice Board until retiring at the end of twenty twenty-four. Is a life member of the Chase City Fire Department with over thirty years of service and has been an active member of the American Legion Post Forty-three in Chase City for forty-five years. Now therefore be a result by the Mecklenburg County Boulder Supermarket that we give out honor and recognize, call him Gurley, for his lifelong service to our county, our Commonwealth, and our country. Mr. Gurley's unwavering dedication to public service, education, and safety positively impacted many, and his leadership continues to inspire us. He had further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Gurley as a token of our deepest appreciation and gratitude adopted this tenth day of February twenty twenty-five. Go. Any of us, we thank God, and I ask for the highest people on the board, and it's always will continue. And Mecklenburg County is fortunate to have highway safety courts with the people that they have serving. So we thank people that serve, thank you, thank you. All right, Mr. Hendrick, I think we've got some zoning to deal with here.
We have an application by Burlington Industrial Properties LLC to rezone from business B one to industrial M one. This property identified as county tax number one six eight zero 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 dash A dash zero two three, partial racket number eight nine five five. His own business B one is located on the south side of seven twenty-two Burlington Drive and approximately eight hundred and twenty-two point four four feet south of his intersection with Route eight oh three, Kennett and Road. The closest partial racket number is eight nine five five, election district one, county of Mecklenburg, Draper Steebook, L R dash twenty-four dash eleven six seven.
Okay. I think we have a presentation on the application, am I right, Mr. Gotcha?
Listen.
Yes, sir, thank you. So I'll just begin by saying tech fusions, we build and operate data centers, but do so a little bit differently than some of the hyperscale giants, the large tech companies that you would know from the area and just from use of internet. So we like to do what we call adaptive reuse, where we take older industrial assets that that truly aren't serving a purpose any longer and convert them into data halls. It, we're enabling basically digital transformation for the businesses in the area. We look to other large scale tenants to support their digital needs. Some, some would be higher density AI deployments, those and the like, as all of our society's internet use continues to grow. So by repurposing these older, older structures, we're avoiding a lot of the carbon impact and the footprint associated with breaking new ground. However, at times, they will need to scale and expand. We have a tenant here who's, who's grown and who's filled many of our halls. So we're looking to use some of the land adjacent to our current site and try to build for their needs as they've requested. So, so many of the parcels, we're looking to merge. Right now, we have a notional couple of plans, but they are dependent on some information that we don't yet have and will work with planning and zoning to, to come to, like what setbacks are, what some of the line of site requirements and different feasibility studies. So, so this is what we're looking to do with the, with the bulk of these sites here, is to expand the operations and continue to support that digital transformation. But I, I believe that there were a few questions that the group had, but.
I think one of the things I'm kind of concerned with in, in establishing these data centers is how would you get power supplied to them?
Absolutely, so, so we will be needing power, additional power. So we are looking to build in addition to those data centers, any new power distribution that's required right now. Routes that we could take for that. We're looking to, you know, obviously bring that power in as efficiently as possible. We have looked at adding different microgrid power supply for ourselves. I think we're running into some obstacles with some of the gas companies, but we would like to, wherever it's possible, we'd like to produce our own and bring that in, rather than pulling from what the community utilities would, would use.
So would this include producing new line structures? I mean, cut new ways to, to get to that?
Absolutely, yeah, and so some of these routes, like I think that the, our preferred is the purple line because it is shorter, so less, less environmental impact of anything, but it is through a state park. So, so these are, this would be the new power lines. And we're continuing to look into what that would entail.
So the purple number one would be a new line that would need to be constructed? And this is not an existing transmission line, correct?
No, and there are, I think the second one, there is an existing line, it would parallel that. But it would consist of more to be demolished, so it's a little bit more impactful.
This route number two would be using this, the transmission line that is already currently constructed by the railroad tracks, correct? That would be the, the green. Okay.
On number one, would that allow to go across the waters to get to where you need to, or would you be saying?
Go across the water, yes.
So have y'all had any public meetings just for educational purposes on that?
I, I don't believe there've been any public meetings. I know we've done all of our public notices, we went through two, and we've heard nothing back that I'm aware of. I, I don't know, Dan, if you know about the transmission specifically.
In what phase of your development would you need this extra power? Would you be able to start what you have now with the existing power, or do you need it right off?
We would be able to start construction and have this be constructed in parallel. But we can't fill our halls with tenant needs without the power. I wouldn't be able to put a computer server there, it would do nothing.
Right, sure. So number one, it's crossing Okanichi and then across the lake, so if y'all, I'm a little surprised that you could cross Okanichi State Park and then go across the lake. So have you already gotten permission to go to route number one, or y'all just projecting that?
I don't think there's permission granted for any one of these yet. These are just the proposed ones that our feasibility study has turned out as potential.
So both of them would have to go, even green would have to go across, across the lake?
Correct, so this is what the actual, the actual utility company sent to us. So, so the plan that you're looking at is not our plan. This is the plan from them saying, okay, this is options that we're looking at right now. Nothing is finalized at the moment, they're still working through this to find out what the best route will be. And then, you know, we will have to look at that with them and see exactly what the next steps are.
So this power be coming from who, Dominion or Dominion?
Yes.
Is it, when you're going across coal property like that, I mean, is that put up any roadblocks, anything?
No, sir.
Okay, so that intimate domain, no matter where it's at, can come into play?
Correct.
And, and what is the projected timeline? Do you have a projected timeline into when you'll need these transmission lines? As far as to, is it, is the general consensus of the board that y'all potentially have three phases?
Yes, so there'll be multiple phases. So the first phase, we have enough power there to start with what we need to do. Actually getting power to the site is over the next couple of years. It's not something that's gonna happen tomorrow. Again, we're still, I guess, right at the beginning process. Would we like to use that existing, the green, which is number two? Yes, because it does come over the lake, just like you said, there's already transmission lines that come across. But this has not been finalized yet, the routing itself. We're waiting for the utility company to say, okay, well, this is the way we need to go, and we haven't gotten that final from them yet.
I, I would just pretty much kind of go on the record and just say that if, you know, these lines do need to come through our state parks, I, I don't like that. I feel like our state parks need to be protected.
Which is understandable.
Absolutely.
And they, you know, people do come to those state parks for recreational uses, and they have trails through there and whatnot, and I feel like it's, it's intended to be a state park, and we need to do what we can to keep it that way.
Absolutely, and we.
We agree with you.
Everything we want to do is to support the environment.
So as far as you know, as far as if it's applicable or not, the transmission line that already exists, can you just use that right away to supply your adequate needs? Or you just got to have a, an additional?
I think it has to be an additional.
So this would probably spin up soon as y'all spawn up. I mean, because if you're gonna need that in the future, you gotta have it when you do need it, so.
As soon as we can work with.
This would be part of the beginning plan, I would say.
Yeah, so we have an existing client right now that needs to expand. The only way that we can expand this client is with this being done. Us, us starting the property with the amount of power that we have available is not going to satisfy this client, so we have to definitely bring in a new transmission line to move forward.
So if we approve this application today, say if we did, would Dominion, anybody had to come back before this board anything and discuss this? Or do, would they just go ahead and do it and have whatever they think? I would be concerned whether the public would have any input, how much they would have.
Come weigh in on that?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dominion Energy, how are y'all?
Good.
I know a lot of questions, a lot of this is back and forth between the customer, whether it be the developer or Mecklenburg, you know, whoever is our customer under that, you know, particular situation. In this case, we've got proposed lines that obviously have to go through SCC approval, you know, based on the, you know, the, the size, and there's a lot of study that goes along with that, as they've already discussed. So that's, that's one thing in play. I will say that we do have, and I'd encourage anybody to go online and look at this, if you are ever on our dominionenergy.com, you can go on and there's a GeoVoice portal that you can look up Mecklenburg County as a whole and look at all the different transmission projects that we have out there. You will see that we have one that's already approved to bring power down to what we'll call the Jeffers Substation, which is just near Okanichi. You can see that. So this, as you see it before, is the way I understand it, again, not as involved as, as the client here, but that has to go through further approvals. It is a little bit lengthier process at this point in time than it used to be. So once that goes into play, you've got, you know, Army Corps approvals, you got, you know, SCC approvals. So there are multiple stages here that you have to go through. As far as us coming back to you all, we're more or less just providing it, you know, to our customer based on the energy need. You know, I think that's something I could probably come back or provide further updates as it goes. It's quite early as far as how that would play out.
So to elaborate on that a little bit, so the, in terms of local government involvement process, they would be required to have public meetings. That happened, that happens with all the other transmission lines as well. They gain the voice of the public on which of the lines that the, the public prefers. We also have the ability to weigh in at that stage. Once they do that process and submit their preferred route to the State Corporation Commission, there is an official proceeding that happens in which we have the opportunity to intervene. So they don't, they can't come back to us for approval of the line, but if the line that was chosen was something that was not desired by this board and not deemed to be in the best interest of the county, we can certainly intervene and, and submit a petition against that with the SCC. How much weight that has, I couldn't tell you, but we certainly have that recourse available to us at that time. But we don't have any final yes or no approval on any power line anywhere.
So we potentially could still have an update from you, maybe from as this process goes?
Yeah, and I appreciate you adding that, it's a very public process. It's not us coming up with one option, mailing it in and saying, this is it. You know, this is a very, you know, in, input related process as any transmission, you know, project that we have goes. So it's, it's very much in that early stage of it. So as we go along, yes, we can, you know, you know, obviously you'll continue to get updates, whether it be from, from us or whether it be from, you know, the, the customer here. So at any point in time, there's a public input, you know, throughout. So just, you know, we can obviously keep you abreast of where that schedule is. You will see community meetings and such to go along with that.
Will, will current generation supply their future needs and all the future needs in the county?
The, the current capacity we have now? Yeah, I think based on what you, the, they were saying earlier, sorry, I apologize. I'm not, I haven't worked directly with them, so I don't know them personally.
Yeah, I'm talking about generation on y'all's.
Generation, as you can imagine, based on what you've probably all heard recently, is we continue to have to build out more generation. It's absolutely a necessity. Anything and everything we're doing right now as far as the upgrades to the system, which being the transmission system, along with the generation sources. We've got a tremendous growth ahead of us. There's a lot of demand on the system right now. So whether that comes through anything from a customer or whether that's coming specifically from, as you all probably heard, the PJM, who's our regional grid, more or less, they, they, they own the grid, they operate the grid for us, we're a part of that amongst other states. They have an open window process right now that we are nearing the end of, but we have provided solutions to that to just, again, increase not only the, more so the transmission infrastructures opposed to that. But that's why we're also on the generation side proposing SMRs, we're proposing, you know, natural gas. Solar's a part of that too. So anything and everything that you see is us trying to meet that demand, because ultimately, at the end of the day, that's what we have to do. We have to provide power, and that's, it's, it's not a, it's not necessarily your obligation to absorb all of it, but Mecklenburg County is, is a, is a part of it as far as what you all have control over and what you all, you know, want to be a part of. The public is a part of that, anything and everything that we're doing.
And you also have, so you have existing projects which are already taking place right now, which will incorporate us into some of those existing projects that you have going on?
Specific to this site?
Well, no, just, just to the county itself.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of infrastructure going on right now.
Yeah, I, I, I think you all probably know more than I do about some of these projects. You all are live, you know, are living here, you all have seen it every day. You know, I, I, I say that to say, obviously, there's a lot going on in Mecklenburg County when it comes to energy. You know, whether that be transmission related, whether that be generation sources that are coming on to continue to put more power on the grid. So, yeah, it's, there's a, there's a huge demand here that we're having to deal with moving forward. And that, that's why you see a lot of movement on our side as far as what we need to do to meet that. You know, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, but we have to continue to make progress, you know, towards that every day.
And I think one of the biggest thing on the board's side is when y'all have these public meetings and stuff, whether it's about data center growth or whether it's about electric line growth, is keeping the board involved, because I don't think necessarily everybody goes online and looks it up. So if we can just make sure that emails get sent out or we get added to an email chain to say, hey, here's a meeting coming up, so we know what's going on and we're able to provide that information out also.
Yeah, and anytime that we have any public interaction, we want to make sure that everyone's aware of it. So that's something that someone like myself would work through, you all, along with getting it out locally and making sure everybody is aware of where we are in the process. Now, there's obviously times, I will say, that we have to provide information early on when it comes to, you know, transmission related, you know, projects. And those early stages before it's public, that information typically goes between us and our customer. Again, whether that's Mecklenburg or Co-op or, you know, the, the customer and developer in itself, so.
On the number one option, there's, and, and just, you know, all this stuff is kind of the scale, but not so much. But if you were to put that transmission line in, there's no way, they'd have to put pylons in and stuff like that. There's no way they could span that line across that.
Yeah, that, I mean, I, I think you're spot on. I mean, it's, it's gonna involve the necessary infrastructure to withstand it, yeah. So, but again, that's, that is, these are options, these are all routing options. Nothing set in stone at this time.
Another thing is option number two, since you're coming back around the town of Plaquesville in the event of a power outage, if we did and went with option number two, just, and you had an outage, would the town of Plaquesville potentially come back online faster? would the town of Clarksville potentially come back online faster potentially if you use option number two?
It, 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 it all depends on, you know, it all depends on where and what it is. Yeah, it, it's hard to hypothetically say, you know? But yeah, I mean, it's, uh, you know, we'd obviously want to, uh, no matter what it is, we wanna get people back on as quickly as possible. But yeah, it's, uh, it's all about, um, exactly what happens and where it is. Yeah, yeah, cause at times, you know, if you just think about even the distribution level, sometimes you're able to switch power around, you know, issues, sometimes you're not. It's just the way the grid's, you know, connected. So again, it's, I don't wanna hypothetically, you know?
I know, I just.
Yeah, yeah, but I get where you, I get where you're headed.
Make sense.
If this is strengthening the grid for you.
From a customer standpoint, I'm looking at it from a consumer standpoint.
Yeah, if it's strengthening the grid for your area, I understand. Yeah, yeah.
And you, pretty much, we don't know where the lines are gonna go until, until the customer puts in the request for the, for the demand for the usage correct? So, so, I mean, y'all, uh, and so in another words, until phase three happens and they, you know, need the energy, that's when we'll come back and revisit these transmission lines since phase one and phase two don't require these lines, is that kind of where we're at?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, at the end of the day, it's, you know, there's state approvals that obviously come into play here. So that, at, at, you know, at that point in time, that's, that's, that's really the, the key crux of a lot of this is all the work going up into this, up into that point would be more so to get the feedback publicly to try to work and see if there are, you know, options that are, you know, uh, that we can actually lay out, you know, that makes sense. Now, a lot of times too, it's not just about building the line itself, it's also the upgrades that are necessary to make sure that, you know, everything up until that point is also ready to handle that as well. So, uh, a lot of the studies that go back and forth look at the enhancements to the grid that are necessary to also make this connection possible, whichever route that would actually be connected.
What we do know with this client that we have right now, we have to do this to keep this client in the town of Clarksville. Cause if we can't get this done, this client is going elsewhere. So we do know that we do need this power.
Do you have any kind of projections on when potential, you know, the phases and how, how many months or years you're looking out to achieve each phase?
Um, I don't know that exact date, but you know, this is a probably a five plus year project.
Okay.
Yeah, this is not something that's gonna happen tomorrow.
Does Dominion, uh, project, um, that, that this type of project needs going, is going to be necessary even without this client? There's, uh, it'll be other client you projected, this is gonna be needed anyway at some point.
Yeah, tip, the way it, the way it works is we more or less have to have a client in a need in place before that infrastructure is approved and, and constructed. So we're not just gonna be able to run an extension somewhere and hope that it's used or hope, you know? That's, that's obviously, that's, that's a, a, of, you know, an impact to customer base and rates and such. So we obviously wanna make sure that it's something that's coming into play that, in the state obviously is overseeing that as well to make sure that there's a need. So based on customer need, that's what typically is built out. And there are times where there's extra, you know, if you wanna call it room on the, you know, the infrastructure transmission wise, where you can add another line or, you know, as far as. But we actually have to have a customer in play that has a need. Cause at the end of the day, like I said, w- we are providing energy to a customer, you know, whomever that may be. So therefore, that is, that is the key point here. You know, if we have a person or customer for that matter who's, you know, requesting power, we have to do our due diligence and try to find a way to serve them. And ultimately, there's a lot that goes into approving it.
So in the bigger scheme of things, the grid needs to, needs to expand.
Yeah, in order to, in this particular way, the, um, situation, the way I understand it, yes, it would have to expand in order to meet the, the total demand that they are putting forward.
And still no discussion on the CoGen site, no generation of power there anytime?
Nah, not, not that I'm aware of. The only thing I can say, I think what we've talked about before is ultimately that site is, it's owned by our transmission group and they use it as a, a lay down facility for materials and such, what they're doing, work around the area. So as of now, that's the only thing that I know that's in play. But, uh, I know that it's, it's obviously something that's thought about and, you know, if there's anything that does come, I could, you know, provide that update.
Anyone else? You, you wanna continue with your presentation?
Uh, well, in general, I, I just would like to add that, um, you know, it is to the benefit of this one client that we have hosted here and obviously to our company. But I know that the revenue that would be generated, the tax revenue generated from the expansion of those sites would be quite significant. I think right now we're paying around seven hundred thousand a year in property taxes and we would predict that that would quadruple at least, directly impacting the county and going into your schools and other community resources. So, so we're hoping to do this, but also like recognizing that this goes directly back to benefiting the local area for every expansion and improvement and upgrade that you could imagine.
Anyone else have any questions? Alex, you wanna expand anything?
I didn't know if anyone had any questions on the, uh, actual site, uh, itself. You know, that was, that slide came and went pretty quickly. If you wanted to go back there and have any, anybody had any inquiry on that? Or if you wanted to detail this a little bit further?
All I can say is, is there are two designs here shown, um, but as I said, they, they really depend more on our study on setbacks and other things, if and when this is approved.
So, yeah, so we'll definitely have all adequate screening and setbacks.
That, of course, would go through the same, you know, planning process, you know? And nothing, nothing gets built, of course, without approval, as you all know, so.
Yeah, so this would be, if this is rezoned into the industrial zone, it would meet the industrial, uh, requirements for screening and that plan would have to be submitted to planning and zoning, which would approve that. Um, this project would also fall under, if you adopt the construction traffic management plan later on this morning, uh, this would fall under those parameters as well. Um, so there would be, you know, discussion about commercial entrances and the routing of vehicles and, um, activities along those lines, making sure that our, you know, roads are maintained in that area. Um, all of those would, would come into play under the industrial zoning designation. Um, I would note, this is currently a business zone district. So this has been set forth and set out as an area where there would be commercial activity. Um, our zoning law and the recommended practice regarding this particular use is for industrial, um, which has a little bit of a different standards than business. But in general, you know, this area was always envisioned for high demand, high intensity usage. Um, and data centers aren't the only, um, facility out there that would require, potentially require additional electrical power. Um, if we had gotten, for instance, a, uh, let's say we got a battery manufacturing plant or a car manufacturing plant or something like that, those are also high consumers of energy as well. Um, so those are, you know, some other considerations that, uh, might wanna weigh on your mind as you make a determination.
And many of those come with an increased number of traffic noise. Uh, you know, ours, once it's built, it pretty much is set in stone. We have, each building would be staffed with probably twenty to thirty people. Uh, but it would be minimal, minimal traffic, no noise, no, you know, debris, no, you know? Not so much impact to the local residents there.
And I believe I saw where Clarksville endorses the approval of this application.
Uh, Clarksville submitted materials that said that they could supply the, um, water usage, uh, needs for the facility, which would provide another additional customer of magnitude towards their system.
Okay.
So, uh, so with that, that is, uh, those are the plans for that parcel, for those several parcels to be merged. Um, I know there is an additional one that we were looking to convert and make into multifamily housing units uh, that we could use, we, we could lease them to any residents, but we also could use them to host many of our employees since we will see an uptick in not only the initial construction phase for mechanical, electrical specialists, construct, uh, tons of construction. I think at one point we employed two hundred people at a time trying to get this first phase built. Um, so we would see that, but it likely, as we hire and staff long-term, there would be highly degreed and specialized, uh, roles that we would need to staff and we would want to provide some sort of housing and, uh, get more of those high salary dollars into the area. Uh, and of course, wherever it's possible, hire local contractors, local suppliers and, uh, pull from any resources available.
Okay. Um, anyone else have a question on the presentation? Thank you. All right, we'll, um.
Begin the public hearing.
Go to the next phase and, uh, we've got six of these and we're gonna open a public hearing individually on each one and take vote individually on each one, okay? So we will now open the, uh, public hearing. You mean to read, I'll read each one of these then, just?
Hmm, yeah.
We'll now open the public hearing on a rezoning application, Burlington, Burlington Industry Properties LLC, PRN eight nine five five, election district one to rezone from business B one to industrial M one to allow for construction of data center. Anyone wishing to speak on this particular one can come forward. Hearing no one, we will close the public hearing. District one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe, um, like anything else, I, this, this would be good for the, our county and the community. Uh, but with growth, there will always come undesirables. But upon the approval of the planning commission, I'd like for us to, I'd like to submit that we received the rezoning application.
Okay. Heard the motion? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. We'll now open the public hearing for rezoning application, Burlington Industries Properties LLC, PRN eight nine five four, election district one to rezone from business B one to industrial M one to allow for construction of data centers. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. The wishes of district one?
Uh, upon the approval of the planning commission, uh, we accept the rezoning application, sir.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing for the rezoning application, Burlington Industries Properties LLC, PRN three five two two zero, election district one to rezone from business B one to industrial M one to allow for construction of data centers. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. District one?
Upon the approval of the, uh, planning commission, uh, active, we received this, uh, application, rezoning application.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. We'll open the public hearing on rezoning application, Burlington Industries Properties LLC, PRN three five two one nine, election district one to rezone from business B one to industrial M one to allow for construction of data centers. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, we will close the public hearing. District one?
Upon the approval of the planning commission, sir, I ask that we receive the rezoning application.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. We'll open the public hearing for rezoning application, Burlington Industries Properties LLC, PRN three nine seven five four, election district one to rezone from business B one to industrial M one to allow for construction of data centers. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. District one?
Upon the approval of the planning commission, I, I move that we could, uh, receive the rezoning application.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. We'll now open the public hearing for rezoning application, Burlington Industries Properties LLC, PRN three nine seven five three, election district one to rezone from business B one to industrial M one to allow for construction of data centers. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. District one?
Upon the approval of the planning commission, sir, I, I motion that we receive this zoning application.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Mr. Hendrick, I think you're up next on number seven.
We have an application, um, by Burlington Industry LLC to be zoned from business B one to residential R one dash A. This property identified as county tax number one six eight zero zero dash zero one dash zero zero one. Partial racket number eighty eight sixty nine is owned as business B one, is located on the south side of Route seven twenty two Burlington Drive. It is at a, at its intersection with Route eight twenty one Old National Highway, election district one, county of Mecklenburg. Reference D book LR dash twenty four dash seven seven zero.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak on behalf of the application?
I can, I briefly mentioned it towards the close of my last, uh, this would be, uh, two multifamily units of roughly eight dwellings apiece that we have planned for that law.
Okay. All right. We'll now open the public hearing for the rezoning application, Burlington Industries Properties LLC, PRN eight eight six nine, election district one to rezone from business B one to residential R one A to allow for the construction of a duplex. Anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Warren, Dr. Warren?
Good morning. Just, just a request, if, if, uh, if the, there be any further, um, goals of building housing and such, uh, we were hoping that maybe you could include school division, cause we wanna make sure that our school zones can properly accommodate for any growth that occurs. We've, we've just done the rezoning and the board supervisors have been very kind and building, uh, funding some great buildings for us. We wanna make sure that we don't overcrowd those buildings and we adjust accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, assuming y'all can take that in consideration and, like. Anyone else? Hearing no one, we will close the public hearing. District one?
Upon the approval of the planning commission, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I motion that, uh, we accept the application for residential.
Okay. Hearing the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Hendrick?
We have an application by Paul Jackson and Barry Ure to rezone from industrial M one to business B one to allow for truck pulls and demolition derbies by special exemption permit. This property identified as partial racket number seven four four zero and county tax number zero one nine zero 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 dash A dash zero nine zero. Is owned industrial M one and is located on the west side of Route seven eight, seven eighty five John Bill Road and approximately six hundred and thirty one point three feet north of his intersection with Willow Oak Drive, election district seven, county of Mecklenburg, reference D book LR dash eleven dash four two eight seven.
Okay, any, anyone wishing to speak on behalf of the application? Hearing no one, I will open the public hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment by Paul Jackson and Barry Ure to amend Mecklenburg County zoning ordinance, article six, business B one, section six dash one use regulations to allow truck pulls and demolition derbies by special exemption permit. And that is my district. Uh, anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. I will make a motion to approve the application. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. All right, Mr. Hendrick?
We have an application by Willie Price for especially exceptional permits to, to construct two recreational vehicle sites. This property identified as county tax number zero three four zero 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 dash eight dash zero zero six, partial racket number seven nine one five. Is owned as agriculture, located on the west side of Route six seventy one Country Club Drive, approximately one mile south of his intersection with Highway forty seven, election district seven, county of Mecklenburg, reference D book B and P dash two five two dash four zero three and wheelbook WF dash one dash two two one.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak on behalf of the application? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Again, that is my district. I make a motion to approve. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
We have an application by James and Deborah Thompson for especially exception permit for second home on the property. This property identified as partial record number 6285 and county tax number 094000-A-038A. It's owned agricultural and is located on the west side of Route 663 Busy B Road and is approximately half mile north of its intersection with Route 645 Thornton Lake Road, Election District 6, County of Mecklenburg, reference D book BNP 66-608.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak on behalf of the application?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I presented a request to Robert and the planning commission on adding a small house trailer adjacent to our yard. This is for my wife's brother. He's getting on up in age. It's no more than helping an old person. Sterling Farms, my farms, he knows I don't have trash, I don't like junk, and I try to keep it as neat as possible. It will not be an embarrassment to us or this county.
Okay. All right. We will now open the public hearing on this. Anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing? Hearing no one, we will close the public hearing, Election District 6.
Yes, sir, I'd like to motion to approve this special exception permit application with the recommendations of the planning commission.
Motion been made to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Robert, yeah?
We have an application by Jody Williams and Frank Stratus to rezone from agricultural to industrial M1 to allow for a small satellite concrete plant. This property identified as partial record number 8234 and county tax number 031000-A-058 is owned agriculture and located on the south side of Route 660 Airport Road and approximately half mile west of its intersection with Route 817 Hanger Road, Election District 8, County of Mecklenburg, reference D book LR-24-3134 and Wheelbook WF-23-441.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of the application? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing for this application. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing, Election District 8.
Mr. Chairman, with the recommendations of the planning commission, I recommend we approve this application.
Everyone in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. One more, Robert. One more for you.
I got two.
Well, I guess two, okay. I thought Alex was going to take the last one.
Whatever you'd like to do.
Do you have a public hearing to adopt the construction management plan? A copy of this was available in my office for public review. What this is including is commercial development. It sets out that they have to get with us and we have to review it as well as we VDOT on what routes they're going to use for the heavy construction, maintenance of the roads in case there's damage, who's going to be responsible for repairing them. So it's a good article that we've come up with. We were trying to quite sometime to get to this and I think we're, you know, helping everybody in the community, especially with our secondary road system with some of these construction, heavy construction going on.
I think it is absolutely well needed, for sure. Thank you for coming up with that. We only need a public hearing on that, I guess. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the construction traffic management plan? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the board?
I'm moved that we receive the construction traffic management plan, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, everyone's heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Okay?
Okay, we did have a public hearing on adoption of the county 2044 comprehensive plan. There was some technicality in meeting the deadline on the advertisements and the New Virginia Code, so therefore we met that criteria and it's back for you again to be approved.
Okay, so we've got to have another public hearing, correct?
That's correct, yes.
All right, we will now open the public hearing on the final adoption of the 2044 comprehensive plan. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. Any discussion from the board on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt this, but I will also say that, as we said in the previous ones, this is a guide. This is not the law of the land, this is a guide for us in the future.
Correct. Okay. Everyone's heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm surprised I didn't trip up somewhere.
Did great, yeah. But we got one more public hearing, so.
Go ahead.
Okay. As mentioned last month, we were going to be having a public hearing in February on a technical budget amendment for the school construction assistance program. Last year, as we were adopting the budget, we received notice from the Virginia Department of Education that we had received a $6.5 million grant from the Commonwealth to support our Clarksville Elementary School that was adopted into our budget and placed into the new school elementary fund, Fund Number 115, which is on the county side. As it came to be known, as we have advanced through this year and began the process of submitting reimbursements from the Commonwealth, the Virginia Department of Education has deemed it that funds would be going to the school system itself rather than to the county as is customary when it comes to school construction. Accordingly, we need to realign those funds from a county-controlled fund to a school-controlled fund so that the school can pay out the bills and can draw down the reimbursements from the Commonwealth. So this action would do two things. First and foremost, it would move our budget appropriations in line with what I just set out from 115 to Fund 240. Secondly, because this is a reimbursement basis, we are actually spending the money, we're paying the bills to Blair Construction before the funding source to back it arrives from the Virginia Department of Education. As such, we need to temporarily advance general fund fund balance to the 240 fund while we, to support the spending on a cash flow basis. And then when the funds come in from Virginia, we are going to administratively transfer those fund balances back to the general fund. So the second enactment clause of this budget amendment would give the treasurer's office the authority to do that.
Okay, so we need a public hearing on that?
We do, yes, because it is a budget amendment, even though it has no net change to the total budget because the appropriation action itself is more than 1% of our budget. We have to hold a public hearing on that by the Code of Virginia.
Okay. So we will open the public hearing on the school construction assistance program budget amendment. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, we will close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to the fund from 115 will be transferred to 240.
Everyone's heard the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the motion carries. Okay. Jason? I think you're up next.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
I'm up here today because my electoral board has voted and need y'all's permission to move three polling locations, 803, 703, and 103. 803 is currently Chase City Elementary School, and at the conclusion of this school year, they are going to be demolishing that school, so we can't vote there. We do have an election about a week after they're going to demolish the school, so we need to move that one. We have talked with the Estes Center and they have graciously agreed that we can use that facility as ADA accessible, big parking lot and plenty of room for that polling place. So that is why we selected that location. I didn't know if you want me to do them one at a time or all three of them?
We got to have.
We have to take action on each one all the time, but he can certainly present them at once if you'd like that, whatever your preference is.
Have a little space to do it, we'll do it.
Okay. Precinct 703 is currently the Butler Memorial Library. They have been a wonderful facility to work with, but the board thought that the parking situation out there was not the best, a little bit tough to get in, people still go into the wrong entrance. So they suggested moving that precinct as well to the Estes Center. Their plan is to get additional signs, much like they do with the Bracy Fire Department, to make sure that people go to the correct side. And that parking lot currently is big enough to house both precincts. You're only talking about 1,800 people total that would be eligible to vote. Then finally is going to be precinct 103, which is currently at the Clarksville Rescue Squad. Wonderful facility, not air-conditioned. Got to 103 degrees last primary inside. People were less than pleased, especially my officers of election who are in there for 13 hours. So we unfortunately would like to move it back to the school since that construction will be completed. Talked with Dr. Warner, we're going to try and pick the least obstructed place that we can be, which is probably the gymnasium, so that we don't affect it. Usually school is closed, but even typical operations because teachers will still be there.
Okay. So we need individual votes?
Yeah, so in the packet we have the official language that we'll need to take. If you want to make a motion to adopt that language, you can certainly do so. The process from, what we're actually doing is we are authorizing Jason on our behalf to submit a letter of no objection to the Office of the Attorney General, and then the Office of the Attorney General would have to rule on that.
By the read, the language was actually in the packet?
I can read it, I have no problem.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
All right, so the first one is, "At the recommendation of the Mecklenburg County Electoral Board, the Board of Supervisors hereby directs the General Register of Mecklenburg County to file, as set forth in Section 24.2-129D of the Code of Virginia, a request of the Virginia Office of the Attorney General to issue a certification of no objection to the movement of the polling place for precinct 803, Chase City West, Election District 8, to the Estes Center, Community Center. Covered practice as defined by Section 24.2-129A5 of the Code of Virginia for the 25 and 2026 elections, the board hereby declares that this site meets the requirements of a polling place as set forth by Sections 24.2-310 and 24.2-310.1 of the Code of Virginia, including Paragraph B of Section 25.2-310."
Okay. Mr. Franklin, I believe that's your district.
Could you repeat that again?
I will, I will say most of the same language in the next two, so.
No, we're going to let you read it one time. Do we need to read them all?
You don't have to read them all, they just changed the.
Listen, we've read one, so let's, let's read along.
Jason, the only thing, 803 and 703 would be both at the Estes Center?
Yes, sir.
So would they be two different entrances to go in?
It'll be the same entrance, basically. It's going to be, if you've ever been in the Bracy Fire Department, it'll be the same way. When they come in, there's going to be a sign. It'll say if you voted at this precinct, go this way, and we'll put the number. Most people don't know what their precinct number is, but they know where they voted. So it'll be if you previously voted here, go this way. If you previously voted here, go this way.
Is it anywhere else in the county that does that? No.
It's just, it would be those two locations. It used to be done in South Hill at the American Legion Hall, but we ended up splitting that out because.
People don't get confused with it?
No.
In Bracy, they do a really good job.
Yeah. As long as there, we found out, as long as there's plenty of signage.
You don't know where to go, all you do is ask somebody.
Yes, and if you get in the wrong line, we don't stick you to the back of the line, we just carry you right over and get you checked in.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, then I'll make a motion that we move precinct 803 from Chase City Elementary School to the Estes Center.
Okay. I've heard the motion. Everyone in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And 703 is my district.
Yes, sir.
So I would like to move that we make those changes that you've recommended to go to the Estes Center. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. And 103 in Clarksville Rescue Squad. Mr. Hargrove, yours, I'm sure, okay?
I move that we, that necessary changes to make it appropriate for those.
Okay, everyone's heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
We have deleted item four and five on the H, so you want to go with number six and tell us what we need to do?
Yeah. So one of the initiatives in the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act that was passed several years ago was to provide $42.5 billion across the United States of America to accelerate broadband deployment, particularly in unserved and underserved areas, many of which are rural areas in this country. Virginia was entitled to almost $1.5 billion under this program. The Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development has put together parameters for applications to award those funds under the BEAD program. One of the criteria points is a letter of support from the local governing body. This is a net add to the application. They will gain several points towards their total if the board is willing to authorize a support letter. I will note that you do not have to pick only one. Any and all entities can receive support letters, so this does not have to be a process of elimination kind of contest. But we have two applicants who have requested, and Power is our first one with us.
Dave, you want to speak?
Thank you, folks. Good to be with you guys today. Alex, thank you for that explanation. I guess today our presentation is kind of a mix of both an update and a request for this letter of support. You guys have been so generous. And I think I'm plugged in here, there we go. You know, so today we are looking at continuing the broadband initiative into gaining and reaching out for universal coverage in the county. When we talked to you guys for our initial conversations, hey, that's where we want to be. We've got to get it to all the folks. And we'd like to certainly request your support in continuing what we know is a successful partnership and want to show you where the existing fiber is and how we can leverage that to continue to pursue that universal coverage there. If you look at this map, this map shows a, three grants actually, 2022, 23, and 24, which were parts of regional body applications that went through the South Side Planning District Commission. And of course, your county, Mecklenburg, was a part of that. Now, in total, you can see each of those dots represents a location where service would be provided. It represents 23,195 locations. Now, think of the number, if there are three people on average in a residence, consider the number of people that that's impacting in South Side, Virginia. Now, there are 11,990 that are in Mecklenburg County. That's impacting nearly 30,000 residents, at two and a half per resident. So this has been a big deal and it's, and it's working well. So to take a look, okay, where is fiber available? Where is this high-speed internet available? If you look at this map across our region, you can see that those pink areas indicate areas where fiber is available, where the fiber is in there, it's lit, it's in those communities, and folks can sign up for that. So in Mecklenburg County, fiber is available, it's in what we call an open now area to 7,476 locations. So for all of the completion of those three projects, that's 62%. So how does, we'll get to the BEAD request, but it's important to explain where all of this stuff is. So if you look at that map that's before you, that shows the fiber that Empower has deployed through those projects, okay? So if you kind of look back at the one that was previous to that, not all areas are open, but there's fiber that continues to go in the ground, continues to be spliced, continues to be opened up. There is 2,400 miles of fiber across that region. So there is fiber coming in to both sides and connecting both sides of Mecklenburg County. How many people are hooked up to it? Has it been successful? Are people taking it? There are 3,567 locations, families, businesses that have taken this service. So you can see each where they're located. They're located all across our county. And if you'll think about it, those are the most rural areas of our county, the places where people need it. And we continue to build. So let's take a look at this. Now, one of the things that you guys will remember, several years ago, you signed into an agreement, a memorandum of understanding with Empower, Mecklenburg Electric Cooperative of the County, and Dominion. Dominion has placed fiber throughout, throughout our region, throughout the counties. As a matter of fact, they have constructed a hundred and fifty three miles of fiber, of mainline fiber. What then happens is we attach to that, we provide the last mile portion of that. Now, right now, in Mecklenburg County, we are utilizing the fiber that Dominion has built to serve homes in and around the Clarksville area and going toward the Halifax County line. That's where fiber is in, that is the Empower fiber that is in Mecklenburg County. So you can see, we're able to get to it. The plan is working, the universal coverage is, is on the way. Next step, what is the next step? Next step is BEED. The federal BEED program provides an opportunity to really finish out the last portions of homes that have been unbuilt. Each of those little red dots that you'll see on that map represent those, those addresses. There are twenty one hundred and six of them that remain in Mecklenburg County. Look how close that, the existing fiber that Empower has is located to each of those addresses. We are already in the neighborhoods. We're right next door, we're right across the street. It really is that next extension in obtaining universal coverage. One of the things that's a little bit different, you guys may recall that in previous grants, federal grants, they use census blocks, and you guys work with census blocks routinely. They're changing it now to zip code tabulation areas. So you can see those are the areas where, how the blocks will be set up and where those people are located. That's more of an informational type thing to give you guys there. There are thirteen zikdas, zip code tabulation areas in Mecklenburg County. The bulk of those, there are eleven where most, most, all of the folks are located. And like I said, there are thirteen hundred and three that are, are unserved, they have no service there. There are eight hundred and three who are underserved. They've got some internet there, but it's not enough to, to do all that they need to do. It's not, not enough for them perhaps to, to stream back and forth a video call for work. So in total, there's twenty one hundred and six. So that gives you a, a really good, quick overview of, of where we are. It gives you a really quick overview of how prepared we are to go into that next level into BEED. And to continue to see that, that our areas are, are served. So we do think that this has been a great process, a, a good partnership with Mecklenburg County. You know, you guys started off and were really helped initiate this through the very first grant that we received through the Diva Commission. And that started that process and it has continued. So might there be any questions that you guys would have?
Well, David, you'd say you, you know, you, your broadband is in areas and people are signing up.
Yes.
You got a percentage of maybe how many people are, are signing up that you, you know, you're in the area and roughly?
David, there are some areas that we have as much as twenty percent, well, we have as much as eighty percent of some of the folks in those areas are hooked up. And we have other areas where there may be twenty percent of the people that we pass by that are hooked up. Most of the time, what, what happens is the people that, it takes a little while to get folks hooked up. It takes a little while, as you guys know, it takes a little while for, for our folks to understand what they can do with it at their home. So on average, we're between forty and fifty percent.
Right.
And continuing to push that up.
And just thinking about, you know, schools and, you know, the kids need access to computers and stuff like that. And I want to, you know, like you got neighborhoods that, you know, may not be able to afford another eighty, a hundred, whatever, you know. Do we look at that to help these communities potentially out to?
One of the things that is required in BEED is that there is a low income solution that provides a hundred over twenty, and that is part of, of the consideration in making this application. So there are some requirements there that Empower will meet in making this application.
So would they, do you let those people know in those, I mean, how do you get that out?
They would certainly know, just like previously, there was, you know, there was some broadband funding that the, the federal government provided. And certainly we let folks know that, hey, this is available to you, you just have to apply for it. And if, if you meet those requirements, then certainly you're, you're eligible for it.
Right, okay.
And that's one of the things that we think will happen with BEED funding in Virginia, is that some of that funding will be utilized to help low income folks and help make internet affordable for all household and offhand.
Right.
I heard you spoke something about being, some areas being underserved. Is that some of the same stuff that, you know, that it can't afford, something in there?
No, sir, that means the speeds are not available at this point. The high speeds are not available, they may have ten over, ten megabits download, one megabit upload. They may have twenty five down, but they don't have, they don't meet that federal broadband definition, which typically is, is set at one hundred megabits down and twenty megabits up. So there are places that don't have, don't meet that definition of high speed internet.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Alex, you want to add anything?
And if there's no further questions, the action that we would need would be for you to endorse their application and direct me to issue a letter of support to the broadband office, to the DSCU.
Motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion.
Everyone's heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
The other applicant we have in front of us is Verizon. Is there someone from Verizon here to speak to that?
Same, same process, need a motion to, a lot of approval.
If, if you would like to do that, yes.
Yeah, I don't think it hurts.
Yeah. Anyone like to make that motion? Motion been made, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Kevin?
He doesn't want to give a presentation.
Morning, how y'all?
Morning.
Uh, you should have got our monthly board report and, on the second report in the last month, we've been dealing with snow and potholes, that's been our big thing. Currently today, we are pre-treating our primary roads today with the brine. Our crews are, our crews will start twenty four hour shifts tomorrow. And we'll be here until we get the roads cleaned off and everything. Also, uh, just want to bring to the board's attention, I'll be requesting a meeting with secondary, secondary roads committee here in the next couple of months. We need to look over some six year plan, see what we're going to add. We've got estimated funds of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars for Mecklenburg County. So we'll be looking at adding about two point one miles to the plan. Our goal is to try to have a public hearing in the month of May, so.
Okay.
That's all I've got, unless y'all have anything to add, any questions?
Grabbin, you, you in charge of secondary roads, aren't you?
Whenever it suits, we'll get together.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank y'all for, they, we had some issues on the road going down to the fire training grounds and we reached out to them and they came down and took care of it. And I know they'll stay on top of that, but when we have all those big heavy trucks going in and out of there for training and stuff like that, especially with the way the weather's been lately, but thank y'all for taking care of that, boss.
Yes, sir.
Also want to thank you, I, I think that, I haven't been back yet, but I'm assuming they clean those, those ditches out that we met the other day. And thank you so much for your time.
Yes, sir, I'm not sure if they've done that, done that work yet with all the rain and, and stuff, but he, he'll get it done.
Okay, and I was, Mr. Grabbin, when you have your meeting, there's a road called Overlook, don't overlook me this time.
The pipe, you know, on forty nine right there, I forgot, what size pipe, you know offhand, what size pipe?
Twenty four or thirty six, might be a thirty six one, you talking about the new one going under forty nine?
Yes, sir.
I think it's a, it's either twenty four or thirty six that they're going back in with it.
I think it's bigger than that, but that's something y'all.
I think it's going to be, I think it's bigger than what, what's currently there.
Sounds great.
There is a tremendous amount of trash along the highways.
Yes, ma'am.
At, like ninety two, fifty eight, do they still use the work crews from prison to, to that? Or just, how is that being addressed?
We, we do, we do, when we do get inmates from Baskerville, we do put them out, picking up trash. I will tell you, we've got a little bit of funding set aside. We're planning on doing a countywide cleanup on the primaries and high volume secondaries. It'd be late March, early April to, to get the litter picked up. Like I said, anything else, if we can get the inmates to do, do little short sections, we can. But, but we're trying to hold off everything until, till we get the contractor to do that.
You know, highway ninety two has it more than its fire share, and that's due to the regional landfill. With, I've gotten behind trucks, it does blow off sometimes. I think I talked to Mr. Brinkley about that, and we, well, next time we have a regional landfill committee meeting, we're going to address that.
We would appreciate any help you could give.
Would you not agree that that has more than any other road?
It does, and it's typically, you know, in, in all three counties that we serve, the, the routes to the landfill are the ones that gets the litter on them the most and stuff, so.
Yeah, a lot of that is from trucks coming off of trucks going to the regional landfill.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Dry Creek Road, I'm sure y'all are aware, it's starting to come apart already, this is the length about thirty four. It's got some bad potholes on it.
Okay.
I know it's the worst time of the year, it's going to show itself right now, I understand that, but, you know, I think we get a little more out of a brand new road.
Yes, sir, let me ride through there and let me see what we got. We, we shot, shot it late, which that was not good on our part, I mean, but, I mean, weather caught us there, but.
Honestly, I know how it goes with weather, but it needs some ditch.
Yes, sir, we'll look at it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One more.
Yes, ma'am.
Just saying, a few safety issues need taking care of on six fifty four.
Yes, sir.
I'm home every Wednesday mostly, if you want to stop by and I can show you.
Okay, and you said home, you say Wednesdays? Okay.
You know where I live.
I'm working night shift on this storm, so it may not be a good time for me to stop at night, but I try to catch up with you next week.
Ten o'clock.
Okay.
I don't have my legislative report.
Yes, sir.
One more thing, y'all are still, y'all compiling data and stuff from the, from the, right there, the, right there, the fifty eight and fifteen, as far as the, the number of accidents that we've been having there, y'all keeping track of that data?
Yes, sir, we, we've known it's been an increase of traffic here lately in there. And then, of course, with any increase of traffic, it's an increase of, of accident potentials and stuff. But that intersection's going to be looked at again, be studied again, and, and get updated traffic numbers and stuff sometime in the, in twenty twenty five. So hopefully it'd be sometime in the summer.
Also, right there, the industrial Microsoft facility right there at Open Mission State Park, we're seeing a spike in, in accidents right there as well. So I don't know, like I said, just keep that one on the radar maybe too.
Yes, sir. That, that intersection too is in conversations every time we have meetings with, with Microsoft and stuff and see what we can do there.
Thank you.
Alright.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Alright, thank you, Kevin.
I'm giving my laundry list today.
Alex, you got a public comment, we got any sign up here?
We do, we have several.
Alright. The first person we have signed up is Beverly Wood.
I'd like to remind everybody that, please take three minutes, I don't want to have to stop you, so. Just, just a friendly reminder.
This is a handout with all the other information that I wouldn't be able to cover. It's fun, it's not all laborious, it's about a movie theater, so how could it not be fun? Good morning, and my thanks to the Board of Supervisors for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Beverly Wood, daughter of Lillian Garrett Wood. I was born here in Chase City, I attended Bluestone. I got my BS in chemistry from Mary Washington College and my masters in amicable chemical chemistry from the University of Georgia. Working for Kodak in Rochester started my pursuit of the film industry. I left Kodak for Film Laboratories in Los Angeles. After having an amazing career in the film business, I retired in two thousand fifteen. I returned home after being in Los Angeles for more than forty years, so that's why I look so happy. Since returning here, I've spent my time at McCallum Moore Museum and Gardens and Save Our Heritage on the Mecca Project. While I love the gardens, the theater is my heart. I have spent the last seven years working to restore the theater with Save Our Heritage and have written grants and raised money the old fashioned way, begging. Begging really for help. Many people have donated to us and support our mission, I'm happy to say. We have used that money to improve the structure and have accomplished most through grants, including a new roof, removal of the asbestos, support to the balcony, removal of a tree in a back wall, and structural evaluation. Via a hundred thousand dollar planning grant from the Industrial Revitalization Group, we were able to get the funds to get drawings done for the construction. I guess you could say we are shovel ready. Earlier this month, I'm happy to say, once again, through the Department of Historic Resources and their Preservation Two Fifty Grant, we were awarded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a grant to complete Phase One of the renovation of the back. Did y'all hear what I said? That estimate for Phase One of the renovation actually is nine hundred and ninety eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, just under a million dollars for Phase One, and we just got the grant for seven fifty, which we would renovate the lobby, the ticket booth, concessions, restrooms, electrical and plumbing. The difference is what I'm asking you for today, I'm greedy. You can always say no, but I'd like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is the required match of the grant. Once the phase is complete, we plan to operate the Macca as a venue for receptions, meetings, fundraising events, and we'll have refreshments, coffee and pastries, wine, popcorn, are just a few things we plan to offer. I'd just like to mention that the Grandian Theater is able to keep their doors open during the pandemic by selling popcorn, wine, beer, coffee and pastries. They also sold their marquee to people who wanted to wish people a happy birthday, which I thought was very interesting. We will continue to raise funds for this project, write grants for Phase Two. We need six hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty eight dollars. That will be to restore the balcony, where we will also redo the, uh, projection booth and make it historical to show how film is used or was used in the process of showing a movie. Phase Three, two million, one hundred and ninety eight thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars for completion. That would be the rest of the theater.
Miss Wood, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to stop you there.
What's wrong?
Well, we, we're into four minutes right now, but our light isn't working.
Oh, okay, I guess I spoke too slowly, I'm, I'm just at the end. Once the building is done, we would then be able to operate. All of the information that I've gone through is in the packet. Thank you again for the opportunity, have vision, invest in Chase City.
Thank you. Is the light not working?
I didn't even know there was a light.
Yeah, that's, that's my cue. Uh, who else you got, Alex?
Alright, uh, next on the list is Cliff.
Cliff, how, how could I forget about you?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Alright, well, good morning, I know y'all know me, but for the sake of the record, my name is Cliff Scher, Development Director with Long Road Energy. We're the developer developing the Seven Bridges Solar Project, that's three miles northeast of Chase City. I'm here, here to share a quick update on a few things. I'm here here to share a quick update on a few things. First, on the construction management plan, we reviewed that, and we're glad that you all passed that. We support it, and um, we feel it's a good plan and look forward to working with the county on a plan for our project. Next, uh, you know, people uh, did originally express concerns about our project being near the South Maheron River. Um, in response, we committed to conserving two hundred and fifty acres along the South Maheron River. We've been talking with the Evergreen Team, a conservation entity that's active in Southside Virginia and Mecklenburg County and other counties. Um, and we're um, planning to work with them on conserving the land in perpetuity with a focus on water quality and wildlife. Next, on the Energy Bill Assistance Program that I shared with you at an earlier meeting, um, we've heard questions about potential for solar projects to help with local utility bills. And while the electricity from our project goes on the grid and flows to where it's needed, we have committed to make a contribution to help people in need pay their electricity bills. Um, and we found a program at the Clarksville Ruritan Club that um, provides energy assistance for families in need. We plan to make a donation that enables them to make a large increase to the annual amount of assistance they provide and expand their assistance across Mecklenburg County. Lastly, I know there are questions about timberland, coming out of timber and agriculture production. Matt English is here from Easy Energy Solutions. Among other things, they graze solar sites with sheep. We'd be excited to have the opportunity to work with them in Mecklenburg County. Solar grazing is rapidly growing. There's over eighty thousand sheep grazing solar sites all across the country, across a hundred thousand acres. That's increasing every day. It's a great way to keep an agricultural use on property that's also used uh, that would be used throughout the life of the Seven Bridges Solar Project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Matt English is in fact the next speaker.
Mr. Johnson, I'll be quiet unless we wanna talk about the Super Bowl game last night, and I don't think anybody wants to talk about that. Uh, my name's Matt English-Shanway. Uh, I'm from Apple Maddox, Virginia, a seven-generation farmer. And I think uh, several solar companies have been here in this room before, and maybe one or two grazers. Um, I'm not affiliated with them. Um, I feel like some of the solar companies, kinda like plumbers, attorneys, there's some good ones and there's some bad ones. And I feel like Seven Bridges Site is gonna be a really good one. Uh, I met these gentlemen um, probably several months ago, and uh, they approached me about grazing sheep on them. Two years ago, we had a bad drought. Um, hay was short. And I was riding from a farm show from Raleigh through here. I saw these solar farms. I told Dad, I said, "Look at all the grass. It's being wasted." I said, "Can you imagine how many sheep we can put on that thing?" Of course, Dad said, "Look how many cows we can put on it," but we all know fifteen-hundred-pound cow, a hundred-and-fifty-pound sheep, you know, sheep work about on the solar. So two years ago, I got hooked up with a company. Um, I've always ran about forty, fifty ewes, mama sheep. And uh, now we're up to about four hundred in two years. I need about another hundred to go on another site we just got. In two years, we've had zero incidents, health issues or anything. Uh, twenty-three was the first year I did that, latter part twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty-three was the first year. In twenty-three, we had a two hundred and twenty-two percent hit ratio, meaning every mama sheep had twins or triplets. All the lambs, all that meat stays right here in Virginia. Pretty much, I got customers right up the road. I'm gonna visit on the way back home. So we sell directly to the consumer. We don't go to stockyards and sell much, anything like that, even though I do work at a stockyard and auctionery every week, so. But I really feel like the Seven Bridges folks are really good folks to do business with. They keep me in the loop all the time. Every time I look at the phone, I'm gonna text message or email almost weekly, so. With that being said, I hope you uh, give me the opportunity to come over here and form Chase City. We look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next signed-up speaker is Jerry.
Good morning, Mecklenburg County Board of Supervisors, VDOT officials, if you're still here, and others. I'm Jerry Clemmer. I've lived here eleven years, one ninety-nine Plankshaw Drive, Boynton, Virginia. This has been discussed a little bit already. Everyone knows the intersection of Route fifty-eight. Hold on, this'll be a little better. And US Route fifteen and US fifty-eight across the uh, lake from Clarksville is accident-prone. I've been, I've seen many accidents there, two recently, the most recent Monday, a week ago today, about one o'clock. And also recently, I've seen an accident at the intersection you talked about there at the uh, Microsoft entrance near the state park. This is a recommendation to an inexpensive improvement to the intersection of fifteen and and seventy, uh, fifty-eight. When traveling south on Route fifteen with the lake on your right and the Sanoco Station on the right, and want to make a left turn onto Route fifty-eight going east towards Boynton, the turn's a little bit difficult. As you maneuver into the left turn lane, the roadway is sloped to the right due to the curve coming down off the uh, bypass on uh, fifteen and fifty-eight. When you actually start the turn, it's difficult to to take in everything in and then otherwise see where you're supposed to go with your vehicle. It's much worse at night. I've traveled this way, making this turn many times, and it's still difficult for me at night. My suggestion is applying reflective tape to the white lines on the turn lines on both sides as you make the turn across the southbound lane on fifteen. It'll make it easier to for drivers to make the turn onto the excess lane going on to Route fifty-eight, where you go up the hill and under the tunnel and then merge with uh, traffic coming off the uh, the bypass bridge. Making turn lanes with guidelines on both sides is common in congested traffic areas where more than one turn lane goes either left or right in an intersection, especially in cities. And to kind of go along with this, a few years ago, a study was done to determine what could be done to improve this intersection. A traffic circle was the recommendation. VDOT indicated there were two obstacles that prevented the traffic circle. One was the land acquisition of the space, and the other obstacle was funding. This proposal will not prevent the numerous accidents at the intersection, but I feel it would definitely make it easier to maneuver through the intersection when you're trying to travel southbound on Route fifteen and turn left on the fifty-eight. Thank you for the opportunity to present this improvement. Hopefully, painting protective white lines on both sides of the turn lane will not be cost prohibitive. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last person we have signed up is Dr. Warner.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I uh, apologize earlier when I walked up. I didn't introduce myself, Scott Warner, Superintendent, also reside at twenty-one eighty-five Taylor Ferry Road in Boynton. I just wanted to take an opportunity publicly thank on behalf of the school board, our our employees and our students and our parents, uh, VDOT. The the effort and uh, work that your your folks, Kevin, have done, including your independent contractors, of getting the roads cleaned in such a, in such a manner, especially during this last snow event. It was amazing, and also wanna thank uh, the team. They also helped us in our entrance areas and in our our lots. And I know uh, you guys give them a laundry list each time that they come. We wanted to give them a thanks, so thank you.
All right, thank you. That it? Okay. Mr. Brinkley, Legislative Committee? Nope. Yeah, okay. Yeah. All right.
On Tuesday, February the fourth, Mecklenburg County Legislative Development Committee met. Chairman Brinkley called the Legislative Committee meeting to order. Members present: David Brinkley, Claudia Lundey, Andy Hargrove, and Dennis Spence. Members absent, none. On December the eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the county issued a request for proposals with proposed to solicit proposals for qualified offers experienced in the field of comprehensive planning and zoning for wholesale revision of the Mecklenburg County zoning order, the Mecklenburg County subdivision orders, and any related s- sections of the Mecklenburg County Code of Orders, including of all, inclusive of all public engagements and outreach related to these topics. The county received three proposals from the following firms: Inspire Place Making, Three TP Ventures, and the Berkeley Group. The firms were present and gave oral presentation to clarify and elaborate on their proposals. The firms responded to specific questions from staff and committee members. Then we went into closed session. Upon motion of Mr. Andy Hargrove, the board voted unanimously, convene in closed session for zoning ordinance revisions, RFP pursuit, twenty-two da- two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one dash eight dot A twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia. Discussion of the award of public contracts involving the expenditures of public funds, including interviews of bidders, offers or discussion of the terms and scope of such contract, were discussed in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position of negotiating strategy to the public body. David Brinkley, Claudia Lundey, Andy Hargrove, Dennis Spence voted A. Open session, upon a motion of Claudia Lundey, the board voted unanimously to reconvene to open session. David Brinkley, Claudia Lundey, Andy Hargrove, and Dennis Spence voted A. Upon a motion of Andy Hargrove, the board voted unanimously to adopt the following certification resolution. David Brinkley, Claudia Lundey, Andy Hargrove, Dennis Spence voted A. Whereas the Mecklenburg County Board of Supervisors convened a closed session of the date pursuit to an affirmed record voting in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-two of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Mecklenburg County Board of Supervisors that such closed session was not conducted in con- affirmative with the Virginia law. Now for, now therefore being in resolved that the Mecklenburg County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully expected, exempt from open meetings required in Virginia law were discussed in the closed session to which this certification resolution applied, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the Mecklenburg County Board of Supervisors. Upon a motion of Andy Hargrove, the board voted unanimously to authorize the county administrator and the county attorney to negotiate with the interviews offered pursuits of two-point-two dash four-three-o-two point-two A three of the Code of Virginia, David Brinkley, Claudia Lundey, Andy Hargrove, Dennis Spence voted A. Other matters discussed, adjourned, and there was no further business to the meeting.
I agree.
Took you longer to read than it did to meet.
So, no action?
There's no action at this time. Uh, Russell and I have been in contact with uh, firms to negotiate. The terms are currently being discussed. I do anticipate that this will be on your March agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I got.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brinkley. Uh, Mr. Tanner, Economic Development?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. The Economic Development Committee met on Monday, February tenth, two thousand twenty-five, at nine AM in the Board of Supervisors Meeting Room, Boynton, Virginia. Members present: Tom Tanner, Chairman, David Brinkley, Dennis Spence, Sterling Wilkerson. Others present: Jim Jennings, Andy Hargrove, Claudia Lundey, Brenda Blackwell, Kirk Gravik, Alex Godchalk, County Administrator, Angie Kellet, Economic Development Director, Judy Sheffield, Assistant County Administrator, and Jenny W- Whittemore Clerk. Chairman Tanner called the meeting to order. Mr. Godchalk reviewed the bid received from the Bailey Campus, uh, point-six-million-gallon ground storage tank. The bid from Mid-Atlantic Storage Systems at a cost of one million, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Upon a motion of Mr. Brinkley, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the acceptance of the bid from Mid-Atlantic Storage Systems at a cost of one million, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars for the ground storage tank at the Bailey Campus. Supervisors Tanner, Brinkley, Wilkerson, and Spence voted A. Mr. Chairman, I'll pause right there to make it a motion that we approve this bid to Mid-Atlantic Storage Systems in the amount of one million, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Everyone's heard the motion. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries?
Uh, upon a motion of Mr. Wilkerson, the committee voted unanimously to recess until one-thirty PM for the presentations to decide the future membership of Mecklenburg County in a regional economic organization.
Okay. All right, very good. Alex, I believe you were up next.
Well, for these first two, I'll defer to Russell. He's he's worked on them, I I think, a lot more than I have, so.
Um, this is, Highway ninety-two is being improved as part of a county project. The county has retained Timmons Group to assist in property acquisition. Uh, certain property rights must be acquired in order to enable these road improvements. Uh, Timmons has negotiated with the landowners, has voluntarily, has secured a voluntary commitment from them to donate the rights. I prepared the deeds. Uh, the deeds have been signed and approved by the landowners. I think one was Garnett and one was Ashworth. What we need now, under Virginia law, is a motion uh, authorizing the county to accept title to these parcels of land, what you're needing for Highway ninety-two, and authorizing me to uh, sign as approving the deeds as deformed. So the recommendation of staff is that you a- adopt the resolution as presented to you.
Okay. Anyone like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Motion is made. Y'all have heard the background. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Uh, the other is a Slater, um, revocable license request. Um, you did this very recently, um, for Palmer Duggar or Duggar Lumber, uh, Timbering, whatever the name was. The idea here is that this person needs uh, an an access easement across county property. Uh, there is a private road which leads from a public road uh, down to um, a radio tower, which is enclosed in a in a in a fence for to protect it and preserve it. Uh, all they need to do is, they already have the right to go down the private road. They, but once they get onto our land, they need authorization to cross our land. Uh, the revocable license would let them do that. It would be a license which could, which could be revoked by the board anytime without cause, if you see fit. I did speak in length to Ben, and he endorses this idea. So the staff recommendation is that you grant the revocable license to David Slater and his wife.
Okay. That is my district. I will uh, make a motion to uh, give that license to cross the county property. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. General Assembly?
Yes.
This is a favorite part in and out.
It's a great time. You know, I thoroughly enjoyed eating breakfast at seven-thirty in the morning, sitting there listening to city counties and town subcommittees in the house, so it's a great time of year. I'm sad it's almost coming to an end.
Tell us about the uh, the uh, Tobacco Commission the other night, too. I heard you were there.
Yeah, that was that was a good time. But anyway, so the General Assembly is uh, next weekend is the scheduled, not this weekend, but next weekend, is the scheduled end date for the current session. Um, and I wanted to give the board some updates about where some uh, legislation that affects the county currently rests. Uh, I'm only gonna really focus on bills that are still alive, although I'm gonna mention one at the end that is dead, because this is uh, where we're at on them, and those are where the impacts are gonna be felt the most. Coming into this session, one of the big topics, of course, was local land use authority. As we have progressed the last few years, the General Assembly and especially a a number of legislators in particular have taken an increased focus on local land use and how it may uh, impact or uh, conflict with statewide policy goals that have been enacted in recent years by the General Assembly. The first of these is on the topic of solar development. There is currently one vehicle that is still alive. That is a bill that was passed the House on a very narrow margin, um, which was put forth by Delegate Mundin King. It is in the Senate. It has not gone through Senate committees. The Senate version of that bill was never really heard. It was incorporated into a different bill, so it's uncertain where the Senate rests on this matter. But the parameters of the bill are this. Uh, they would require local governments to make a decision on solar projects. The thing that would take away from us now would be exactly what is advancing through the Planning Commission, which is the ability to remove solar as a permitted use, utility sale solar, I should say, as a permitted use in a zoning district. We could no longer exercise that authority should this bill be enacted. However, this bill does keep all However, this bill does keep all decision making at this body. You would have to approve a special exemption permit for each individual project or disapprove that project. That is your right and this bill would maintain that right. This bill would set forth a number of conditions that local governments can enact in their zoning ordinance relative to the regulation of solar. Many of these are on some of the topics that we have encountered in the past here in Mecklenburg County. Some of them are more stringent, some of them are less stringent. For instance, on setbacks, the bill would provide that localities can decide between a certain range, between say, let's, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it say between 50 and 150 feet, you can make a determination between those ranges on what setbacks you would like to employ on any particular project approval. It delves into things like height restrictions, it couldn't go above 25 feet. It puts in one that's very, very near and dear to Mecklenburg County's heart. You would no longer be able to strip the site of its topsoil and you would have to keep all of the disturbed material on site and it would have to go back as soon as possible. So there are definitely a lot of aspects of this bill that are favorable towards our current practices or desired practices. So from, if there was ever to be a bill, and I don't have a sense that the governor would approve this bill, but if there was ever a bill that dealt with this topic that is generally favorable to localities, it would be this one, especially in contrast to some of the other ideas that have been proposed. So we'll see how that fares in Senate local government. And if it comes out of the Senate, we'll see what the governor decides to do. Like I said, I don't think this one's going to get approved this year. But if there are different decisions that are made by the electorate in 2025 elections relative to the last time there was statewide elections, wouldn't be surprised to see this vehicle back and would suggest that this board take a long look at potentially getting support in it because it's going to be much better. In that event, that scenario, it would be much better for us than the alternatives that could arise. So that's the big conversation that's left when it comes to solar. When it comes to data centers, there was a huge report, of course, in December from J-Lark. There was a number of bills that came out of that report that were introduced this session, discussed this session. When it comes to local government land use decision making, there is only one that remains. There is a House version and a Senate version. They are substantially similar, but there's one paragraph in which they do not align. The House version, they are going to, each chamber has already said that they are going to go through with their own versions and they'll go to conference to work it out. Pretty much where those two bills are aligned is that they would mandate that any solar develop, I mean, excuse me, any data center development that comes forth would have to submit a noise ordinance, noise site assessment to the locality and see how the sound profile would work on neighboring properties and how it would comply with locality's noise ordinances, should there be noise ordinances. I would also state that this is not particularly exclusive to data centers. In fact, the terminology that is used in these pieces of legislation is high energy use facility. So it's anything above a certain threshold of megawatt usage, which has been discussed at 100 megawatts. So as I was saying earlier this morning, that could be a data center, but it could be all their high intensity, intensive electricity users such as battery manufacturer, car manufacturer. There's other kinds of industrial uses that would fall under the parameters of that section. Where these two bills also go is that they would grant localities the option of requiring, as time permits, a site assessment that could evaluate certain things like impact on residents, impact on historic properties, impact on recreational activities, impact on forests and agriculture land. So this bill is actually a grant of authority to localities to be able to do these things. So in that sense, from the Mecklenburg County standpoint, it is a favorable bill and certainly one we would like to see go forward. The version in the, the two versions differ because one also goes further than that and would mandate that the power companies would have to supply the localities with information on where the energy usage, how it would impact and where it would run. In essence, the very conversation we had earlier this morning. And so I, my sense is that that provision will not survive. The utility companies themselves have spoke against that at the various committee meetings thus far. There's some sense that that encroaches upon the SEC's province. And so I, I'm skeptical that that makes it through. But a lot of the questions you all raised earlier is, are being raised elsewhere, too, and that is the, where this stems from. So that's the, the big conversation right now in the world of energy usage data centers would be to give you all more authority and not take away power from localities. Then there is one other land use bill that is running through the General Assembly at the moment that would impact Mecklenburg County. It's certainly a bill that I've been watching heavily. And that is a bill that the House version got enacted by the House. The Senate version was previously defeated in Senate local government. So we'll see whether they maintain that stance or not in the next week. But this provision would be to require localities to adopt, it's a housing bill. And it would require localities to adopt a menu of strategies in order to encourage the development of more housing, which is a laudable goal that we all share, I certainly know I do. It would set out nine different strategies. A locality would have to adopt three of those nine. If the locality does adopt three of those nine, then the rest of the bill theoretically does not apply. If they do refuse to do that, then the locality would have to see a seven and a half percent growth in housing units produced in a, which was originally five, now it's a six-year period. And if that does not happen, then there would be a new state board that is created in which any application of housing that was denied by a locality would then be appealed to this new three-person state board who can then uphold or reverse the locality's decision. So once again, it's a threat to the ultimate authority resting with this board. And as a result, Mecklenburg County staunchly is opposed to that bill, or at least that's the stance that I've communicated to date. That would not happen until 2032, that that board would have the power. Nevertheless, you know, it's once again, as I said, a desire by certain legislators to reach down and, and take ultimate final say-so from localities. The other, some of this bill may not impact us as much as others because we're doing the zoning ordinance revision that will incorporate probably a number of the menu of options that are on there. But if we weren't already doing this, this is not work that most localities could do. And so a lot of our neighboring counties would probably be faced with an extreme cost in order to enact this legislation, which is something that I have articulated, is that it is not free to do, which seems to be the mantra of what the sponsors of the bill were saying, that, you know, just pick three of these nine, you're good to go. But there's a lot more work than goes into this, to write in the ordinances and tailoring it to your locality than just that. So definitely watching the fate of that bill very closely because we certainly don't want to have any avenue by which a state board is having more decision making over what we have already rendered a verdict upon. So those are the three big bills dealing with land use that are still around and I'll be monitoring those bills very intensely. There's a couple other things that I did want to bring to your attention that are still alive at the General Assembly level. One bill in particular that would be of interest to this body is there is a study bill that is going, that both the House and the Senate have adopted their own respective versions. So it seems like there's a good chance that this is going to go forward. It would create a two-year study to evaluate state and local elections in this Commonwealth. There is an increasing belief that we have too many elections in Virginia because we have one every single year. They're becoming more expensive to run and so that there might be some desire consolidation and move in the elections, potentially even to even years is certainly a charge that would come out of this study bill. Like I said, it's a two-year study, so your 2027 elections would not be impacted by this bill. But I could certainly see a world in which they do make a recommendation to make this change and your 2031 elections either get moved up to 2030 or delayed to 2032 and put into an even year aligned with other elections. So certainly that would, something that would affect this board, would affect several of the other people currently sitting in the audience. But it's a long ways from occurring because the study could certainly come back and say, no, things are fine, you know, and we would certainly have the opportunity to submit our comments, if there are any, once the study is impaneled. So that is something that, you know, will, will definitely impact this body, potentially impact this body in the future, or at least will be on the conversation board over the next two years. Two other bills I wanted to highlight before wrapping up here. Number one, you know, earlier this morning, we heard about advertising in relation to zoning and other land use. And the very item that we were faced with this morning is currently talking about being corrected. Last year, there was a change that would make the end date of a public notice be seven days before meeting instead of, it previously was five. I think that has caused a number of challenges across the Commonwealth that was unintended. Obviously, you know, it came and inflicted us as well. And so there is a bill that was worked out by the Press Association, that was worked out by local government, you know, VACO, VML, to revert that to the old standard, to go back from seven to five. Under that bill, once it's enacted and sailed through unanimously, there's no issues, consensus bill, then we would, at our body, be able to advertise in the local newspaper the addition before our meeting. So we would be able to have advertised last Wednesday for our meeting this Monday, which I think everyone believes that that, especially that second notice, which is a reminder notice, is more relevant in the most immediate addition before the meeting than it is to pushing it further out and causing it to be further obscured from the view in public. So that is a good change. Wrote comments in favor of that bill earlier and we look forward to that, getting that adopted. The last bill I wanted to highlight, this bill has failed. So, you know, for this year, there's no need to worry about it further. I know there was some discussion locally about the impact of this bill and that was a direction to DWR to revise its catfish limits so that you would be able to, under the bill's tenets, take more than one fish. And several waterways in the Commonwealth and our two water lakes here were expressly identified in that bill. I'm not sure the original intent of the bill was actually issues that arose here. I think there were more conflicts between commercial fisheries and recreational fisheries, more in the eastern shore and the northern neck area. Nevertheless, Lake Carr and Lake Gaston were both, like I said, set out in the bill. But that went down in the, in the House Ag Subcommittee on a seven to two vote. So that got turned, so you don't have to worry about that. If you've seen online any discussion about that bill, it is no longer a pending matter. So those are the top items that I've been tracking as they affect Mecklenburg County. The budget is, both chambers' versions are out now. The next weekend, we will, by next weekend, we'll have the final unified legislative version. I don't see why this will be any different than the last few years. And so I would anticipate that there is a lot of negotiation, probably no state budget amendment that is enacted before we adopt our own local budget. So we'll be having to make some guesses on what happens. And then we'll probably have some agreement late May, early June, maybe late June about what's going to go on. And then we'll all of a sudden see what comes out of that. But at the very least, we'll know by next week where the legislative intent is. And then we'll, we'll see from there what the governor has to do and if they end up in yet another special session, as is becoming increasingly common.
All right. So we got the staff reports, information in there, too.
That's right. Yes, unless there was any questions about any particular topics.
All right. So moving along to the chairman's report. Let me see, we've got an appointment, several appointments. The Mecklenburg Brunswick Regional Airport, I think Angie has been recommended to be appointed to that board in the discussion on that. Angie, you have anything you'd like to say on that?
You gonna get your pilot's license now?
I used to be on it a long time ago.
Okay, well, that'd be very good.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we appoint Ms. Kellet to the Mecklenburg Brunswick Regional Airport.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. And the Board of Zoning and Appeals, we do not have a candidate. I assume, could you give us like, maybe who's on there, what districts they are in now?
Robert, if you want to highlight who specifically is on there. But I would note that the board does not, it's not to the same size of either the plant, certainly not to our board size or the planning division.
What is it, four people or something?
It's five. It's five. So, so you don't, so we don't necessarily, we don't have district representation on, on that panel. So it's more broader area.
I got you.
But we did have a retirement for somebody who's been serving for a long time. We do need candidates.
Somebody in March.
That's right. So the current incumbent is intending to retire after the March meeting, if there is a March meeting, they don't necessarily meet every month, they meet ad hoc. So the purpose of putting on here today was to do that very thing, was to note, hey, we have a vacancy coming, you all need to, you know, come up with any candidates so that we can do that.
Plenty of times before on appointees, so, you know, board members can kind of surface some names.
That's right.
Get a bio, send it to staff and they'll get it.
But Robert, if you'd like to mention who's on there and what general area they represent.
This is from the South Hill District, JR Price is from Clarksville. I have Mr. Murray from the Buffalo Junction area. Chris Terry is from the Buffalo Junction area. Keith Carter is from the Bracy area. So it really, I mean, I think what y'all have done in the past is try to get somebody to rep part of the district somewhere.
Is that where we need someone, South Hill area?
It really doesn't matter, I mean.
I mean, just try to find somebody to represent.
Find somebody in that area, because I got, I got two up in the Clarksville area. I got one from Chase City here, I got one from Bracy. So really it leaves that South Hill.
All right, so if we could narrow that down to the South Hill area?
Yeah, I'd say South Hill to, you know, west to, you know, 47 or so, down that a little bit, or, yeah.
And then this far east is down there, Broadnecks, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable territory to look at.
Okay, all right. So if we could, you know, get the members in that area to maybe surface some names and get that bio to Alex. All right, very good. The next one is the Library Board. We had a member pass away, which we're sorry about that. We need to send that family a lateral appreciation, maybe for that member's serving that, on that board. And they have recommended Kristy Russell. I do not know her, but if that's what they, who they recommended, I'm sure she's very qualified. I think it's a bio in the packet, I read.
Yeah, I believe they were also deficient, you know, they're the same way where they don't have per district representation. They do general geographic areas, but they were also deficient on the representation in the Clarksville area. So the person they submitted would help with that matter.
Okay.
I heard for a reason that she was very good.
All right, is that, I'll take that as a motion.
That's a motion.
There you go. That's how you move that law.
We're going to streamline this, like, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Russell. Congratulations, Ms. Russell. Hope everyone's had a chance to look at a consent calendar and obtain a motion to approve that, so move this chair. Motion be made, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. All right, moving right along. Ms. Lund, do you want to go first today?
Oh, yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing, highway. Need trash pickup in all areas of Mecklenburg. I've been riding around, and it's just awful this year. I don't know what's going on, I'm excited last year, and I don't know what's going on with all this trash. I think sometimes it's like the whole bag is thrown on the ground. So, you know, need to start charging some fines for some of this stuff, and I think it will stop it, some of it, anyway. Also broadband. You're not moving fast enough. You haven't got, you haven't gotten down to Route Two, Six Fifty Four in over two years. We can't get anything. My husband paying fifty dollars a month for service. He has to go up to Pleasant Grove Church, some of you know where it is, on Forty-Seven, to receive his information. Now, to the historical Mecca Theater in Chase City. I hope this board will consider giving a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar match in the grant that they have gotten. Ms. Wood alluded to many of the activities that could go on there for the community, for the benefit of the community and the citizen there. Also, it would bring in added revenue for the town. So I think we should look into that. It's a historical place, and I think this county do have some money for historical development. So I think we should look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lund. Mr. Spence, you want to go next?
Yes, sir. I want to bring up one thing. In the past, we've talked about Hurricane Helene and, you know, how devastating it was, and so I think we all would agree that, you know, that kind of tugged at our heart a little bit, that, you know, all the, all the different devastation we saw. But on a positive note, I want to bring up, we had, you know, we, we had some discussion and we talked about how the community could respond at their level and whatnot, and I had put out some, some information saying, you know, if this is something that you participated in, you know, maybe talk to me. And so I got a few different responses. So I just want to share one of those with you and, and make a recommendation. I wrote my notes down so I wouldn't mess it up too bad. South Hill Longbeards National, they're associated with the National Wild Turkey Federation. On September twenty-sixth, two thousand, twenty, twenty-four, Hurricane Helene made landfall on Florida. It then moved across western Virginia and north, western North Carolina, leaving behind devastation. In response, the whole nation responded, more specifically, Mecklenburg County responded to, to help families. Many organizations responded to the call of the need of supplies of all kinds and all types. Churches, private organizations, EMS, and civic organizations all were included. South Hill Longbeards, led by a gentleman named Nick Brown, he's the president of this organization, was one of the organizations that took the lead to begin to bring organization to the efforts. Other words, someone needed to kind of take the reins and get things a little organized. So happy to say they, they were one of the organizations that did that. Just a few facts that I asked them to provide me with some information, they sent me a letter, and so I kind of want to highlight just a few things, a few facts from that letter. One, over four hundred calls were answered in a period of over five days. That's a lot. Number two, South Hill Longbeards, in collaboration with the annual lodge, they joined efforts and tried to, to take some response. Number three, four trips to western North Carolina and one to Florida. That's a, again, that's a, a large-scale effort for, for this community, or at least for, for this group. Number four, two hundred Thanksgiving meals went out to families for the Thanksgiving holiday. Number five, this is their language, I thought it was kind of cute, so I, I used it. The St. Nicholas Brown with his sleigh delivered two-hundred-and-nine pre-filled stockings and lots of extra items to go along with for Christmas. Number six, they, they estimate that over four-hundred-thousand dollars' worth of goods were delivered through the sport of Southside Virginia as a whole. I want to thank everyone who made this a success. With, with all of that said, I want to request that we provide a resolution to South Hill Longbeards. Prior to their March fifteen banquet, they got a banquet coming up, and they'd like to recognize some of the folks that were involved in this, that, that made it happen. Nick Brown is the president, and he, he certainly is one of the people that's providing information, but I applaud him to say that even though he was directly involved, he wants those other people around him to be recognized. I think that speaks volume to his leadership. I would also want to put it a call to all of Southside Virginia, that if you helped in the effort in some kind of way, I'd like to gather that information. I, I think for a variety of different reasons, somebody needs to gather that information, and, and I don't know who else it would be. So I'm putting myself out there, and I'm asking that you please contact Dennis Spence with your details, and I'll try to continue to, you know, to, to put this information together as best I can. I would appeal to the local newspaper publications, if you would, to, to try to put out something to the public along those same, same efforts.
Okay. So you'd like a resolution from this board in appreciation to the, to the South Hill Longbeards, am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
That's correct. Okay. I don't, Alex, you write that up, something?
Yeah, I'm happy to write that up and transmit it to them and, and the resolution.
I want to take that as a motion, that we do that. So all in favor of, of that motion, that we do that, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Anything else you have, Dennis?
No, sir, I think that's enough.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing I'd like to do is take a minute to recognize Mr. Glenn Allen, who passed away a few days ago. Glenn was a council member for the town of South Hill, but he was also a past chairman of the Roanoke River Service Authority, and he was always involved in his community and always gave back to the community, so I just want to take a minute to recognize him. Also, I think the board all got an email from Mr. Birch about the new roof prop we purchased for the fire training grounds that is installed and is being used. So they, all the agencies, several agencies have already come to use it, so thank the board again for their contribution to that. And one thing, too, I know we're getting ready to work on all our ordinances and stuff like that, and I think one thing we need to make sure we look at in our ordinances is when we are approving different things through zoning and stuff like that, when it comes to events, there actually is a clause in our ordinances now where groups are supposed to get a permit from the county, and I think the biggest reason we need to make sure we do that is so law enforcement, EMS, fire, groups like that, understand what's going on in their areas, and we don't approve anything that's going to overtax their ability to respond to something in the area. So we just need to make sure when we're looking at our ordinances, we take a little bit deeper look at that also. And if anybody's seen it on Facebook, the Bailey Center and the New Hope Church in South Hill helped put on a Night to Shine. It was an event that brings the community together and especially need citizens in the area to really celebrate each one of them, and I think it was just an amazing event, and I think we definitely need to celebrate that and recognize them, and, and again, just thank you to our staff, thank you for keeping us informed about everything that's going on and what you do for the citizens of the county.
All right, very good. Ms. Blackwood?
Yes. First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Gurley on his recognition in my early days of teaching. We taught together at Newstone High School. And also, I'd like to recognize for, recognize Mrs. Wood for her contribution to Chase City. You know, people retire, and they come home and lay back. She had, she came home and got to work in Chase City. So she's bringing something that's valuable, not just for Chase City, but for Mecklenburg County. She's opening up opportunities, and also, our youth can see what is available beyond sports. So that's also an, an enrichment. So job well done.
Thank you so much.
That's all.
Okay. Ms. Grab?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things, kind of piggybacking off of Ms. Lund, it said as far as, you know, ticketing people, you know, if they dump trash. Does this county have any fines associated with people dumping stray animals?
Look to the back of the room, Pat, I don't know.
I feel like it's something that potentially we just need to look at going into the future. I see on Facebook or social media anyway, you know, with the number of, of animals that, that we do have to euthanize every year. You know, they, I'm sure, you know, I think with the, with the pounds, when they have room, they take them, but when they don't, they only have so much time. And I kind of tug them hard a little bit because, you know, it's got to be a pretty bad feeling to be put to death because nobody loves you. So I want to be, I, I want to advocate for the local SPCA's. I want to advocate to the general public to, you know, get out there, get you a fuzzy friend, let them lick you in the face. They love you to death, but on the same note, I want to punish the people, and I want this thing, when you come in this county and dump animals, because this is not a place to dump trash or animals. So I want to advocate for that. Another thing is, do we have a Verizon rep that we can contact and check on the status of the tower in the Sandy Fork area?
We have, there's a statewide governmental affairs person that has always been extended as the person to contact for any matters in Virginia. We do not have a local, you know, Mecklenburg County person who's been made available to us as a point of contact, but I do have the information for the statewide person.
Okay. It's just been some, some discussion in District Nine as far as the status of that tower that they had put up in the Sandy Fork area. People are, you know, still talking a little bit, you know, it's been up for, I think, several years now, service hadn't improved at all. They're associated with the carriers that are, that have put that tower up, and I'm, I'm just trying to figure that out for them.
What, what they have asked for when service has, questions have come up before, is if the people who have the issues would put together the inform, the following information, and it would really help them, because then they can do explicit testing to determine what the actual issue is. Name, name on the bill, not just, you know, your name if you have a family account or whatever, who's on the bill so they can look at that. The phone number itself, and then if somebody has the time that there's an issue or in the location of the issue specifically. So if you're on a certain road at this time, your call dropped, note that as best as you can. That will help them direct their engineers to be able to pull the reports much quicker to determine what the cause of the failure of that call might have been.
Well, what I'm being relayed is it's not improved, period, like, at all, like, it's, you know, lights on, nobody's home. There's no, signal's not any better, and it's been, I think people have been somewhat kind of a little bit patient as far as hopefully getting that tower online, but nothing's just kind of sitting there blinking, and they're paying their full bill and no, the service isn't any better. So I'll just see if we can get a, you know, check the status on, if it's plugged, if it's working, if it's not, are they waiting on five or six or twenty G? I don't know. But just, we see if we can check.
Yeah, we'll, I'll transmit a message to that contact.
That's all. All right. Mr. Wilkerson?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to piggyback on what Mr. Hammond said about the Bailey Center and what they have going on in this community, that's this fairly new organization, and they are really growing. We should do everything we can to support them, what they're doing, because there was a lack in area, for the kind of work that they were doing, in my opinion, so I'm glad to see they're going. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Gurley, you know, he, he served Hefter County in a lot of capacities, it sounds like, for a long time. It's, it's just good to see that they're being recognized, sometimes it gets overlooked, so thankful for that. And the last thing, another thing, you know, I'm glad to see the legislature is trying to keep the local level decision-making alive and well. I mean, it would be a vast overreach of the power by the state government to even have much of anything, in my opinion, to do with our decisions. I think that can be a very slippery slope if you, you know, start taking away certain powers, so it's just a breath of fresh air to have the right kind of, you know, direction and enrichment. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Rankin?
Well, I too, again, like to congratulate Mr. Gurley, he's been a good friend of mine, he's helped me in a lot of ways, or, I think I've talked to Ms. Kite before, that he, he obtains a lot of information about the history of Chase City that, that, you know, I know in our community, a lot of those people have passed by that, that has a lot of information that we don't know, maybe, or maybe didn't obtain, but he, he'd be a good one to reach out for, to, to kind of get the history of the town and all. The, the other thing, I'm piggybacking on the trash, I, I come up ninety-two one day the first of last week, from Chase City to Borden, and I would have been embarrassed if I'd have had a friend from over the county or some riding with me riding up that road. It, it's just unreal, all the trash that's laying side the road, thinking, and then when I left Borden going back to Chase City, I did happen to, I think what Mr. Jennings said, that I got behind a trash truck, and those bags and stuff were, you can tell where everybody shops around here, it's, you know, if you get a, the blue bags are Walmart, the yellow bags are from Dollar General, and the white bags are Food Line, you know, they just come there. So that was another thing I would like to ask, is what, can we ban plastic, those plastic bags within the county?
That authority has not been extended at this point. What, the only power that would be allowed right now would be to add a net additional tax of five cents per plastic bag, but the ability to individually ban polystyrene plant bags or any bags like that, that legislation has not been enacted at this point in time. It has certainly come up, it's been introduced, but it has not been enacted yet.
And the other thing, it's a little something disturbing coming, I saw this week, you know, I think our President of the United States signed an executive order to ban men into women's sports and all, and somebody that's raised daughters, got granddaughters in sports, coached and been around sport, girl sports for the last forty years, I ring, and, and all, and, then I saw where the Virginia High School League said it's not banning transgender women from women's high school sports, and I was hoping Dr. Warner would be here to ask him, you know, who, do they have the authority, I mean, our county, all our public school around us, and two, you know, they work under that VHSL, and it's a, it's hard for me to believe that's the way most counties feel. So I don't know whether we can send something or something that, I mean, I think most people would, on my end of this, you know, not lay on them to rule us with that. I, I'm very disappointed in that, that they have the authority to just say they're not going to do that. So I don't know, I reckon somebody, Dr. Warner, about, from the high school level or something, I mean, like, say, from the county.
Oh, I agree with you, a hundred percent.
I think we should totally reject what the VHSL is trying to hand out to us. And that's, yes, sir.
Mr. Albre.
That all you got?
Well, I do have one other thing. I did. I did, I went to a funeral Monday. And Mr. Algro is working for the funeral home, working up there and all. So I'm going to be a little careful what I say to him, because every once in a while, he offers me a bottle of water or a piece of cake. You know, bitches get to get on a little lac up there. I don't know how involved he is with that, but I want to be a little bit more careful what I say to you, Mr. Algro. Hey, you, you've done well.
Take care of him, don't worry.
I am, listen, I'm just telling you something right now, I am the last one that will let you down.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This roundabout, we were talking about fifteen fifty-eight. We, we, we spoke about that about seven years ago. They visited and said everything okay, of course, to their numbers and so forth. And recently, this year, and this year, with this year not apart from last year, I've heard that there have been more incidents there. And I'm glad someone else is going to revisit it. They talked about a roundabout once before, but the roundabout was so expensive, because you had to change the park if they didn't, in order for it to make it work. And I think at that time, Clarksville couldn't afford that amount of money. And so, but something needs to happen before somebody gets killed in, in that area. And also, for Chase City, we're talking about having something in Chase City so that our people have somewhere to go, our kids will have something to do. And I think as a board, that we need to take a closer look at how can we kind of support this theater that we possibly can. That is something that Chase City needs. They need something that, that's growth-worthy, may I say, for better words. And also, that the, the, Ms. Grab, you are the president of the Second Roads Committee?
That I've been told, yes, sir.
Okay, but thank you very much. Let me tell you again, you are, so please don't forgive me, please.
I'll try not to overlook, overlook, really.
And, and, Ms. Brinkley, one thing I do advise you, since you said that I work for the funeral home, please do not go asleep around me.
I'm not. I'm not. I'd be in that box quick, man.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it. Thank you all. I don't know that I've really got anything to add to it. We've kind of had a long meeting this morning, got a lot done. So I completely agree with everything that everybody has brought up to this board, and it's not needing to be redundant, and mentioned it again. But I know, Mr. Grab, when, Mr. Brinkley was chairman of the Secondary Roads Committee for years, and he got every road in his district paved. Not really, but we always, we always tease him with doing that.
I would question that.
Anyway, that's all I have. Any, anybody else have anything?
No, sir.
All right, we'll stand adjourned.